Please be advised, anyone that's present here today, you are under oath before the Commissioners' Court. Public comments? We have one public comment in regards to 6.4 through 6.7. Mr. Ortiz.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. I wanted to make this public comment in regards to the budget adjustments that are on the agenda date. As per the government code, employees can only be paid up to the salaries approved within Commissioners' Court on the budget. Depending on how the adjustments are voted on today, I can correct the salaries for this coming payroll and the previous. Although there was one department that was not put on the agenda date, and therefore my hands are tied and I cannot correct them until the adjustment comes through Commissioners' Court. As filed in the county clerk's office within the Sheriff's Department, there was three physicians that did not get the $1.50 increase that was approved back in September. And then there was one physician that was actually less than what they were making last year. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention and hopefully we can get it corrected for this next Commissioners' Court next month.
We have a Bureau Patel with the Texas Association of Counties.
Good morning. I'm here to present the county-specific incentive design for Dimmitt County. And I'm going to briefly go over the purpose and benefits of a county-specific incentive as well as the structure and reporting. So the county-specific incentive allows counties to incentivize employees for completing health activities. And some of the benefits of it is that it encourages healthy behavior and can help to control future costs. So for example, one of the required activities is the annual physical. And the, one of the benefits of doing the annual physical is that it helps to detect and treat chronic conditions early on before they become more serious and more costly. Additionally, Dimmitt County can earn 30% of their eligible amount of employer reward funds for implementing a county-specific incentive. And I also have the Dimmitt County Specific Incentive Design Draft document. So these are the activities and rewards I discussed with Carlos. So listed are the activities, including the annual physical, the complete three out of four fitness challenges on the WebMD1 portal, as well as a walkathon participation. And then there, sorry. There is an earning period from January 1st to September 30th. So the member or the employee would need to complete their activity by September 30th in order to earn the reward. If the Commissioners' Court decides to approve this county-specific incentive design, the next step would be to work with our new wellness platform, WebMD1, to upload the design onto the portal for tracking. There are a few different ways to track which employees completed the activities. So that can be done through paper forms that are signed off by the physician. Or it can also be done online. There's an online attestation form for the annual physical. And then there is also the ability for wellness coordinators to pull the reporting from WebMD1 of who completed the fitness challenges since they will have admin access. So that was a very brief overview. Were there any questions on that? There is further information. Thank you.
Approval of minutes of regular meeting October 9, 2023. Motion by Commissioner Lotzokarwana. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 Approval of bonds? There is no bonds. No action taken. 2.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Presentation. Present the benefits of the online tax sale foreclosure platforms for the county.
First, I'd like to say it's a pleasure speaking in front of you all today. We appreciate the honor. My name's Corey Owens. I'm with Auction List. My name is Ryan. And basically what we do is online tax sale foreclosures for the county. I'm sure you're all familiar with the auctions that appear on the County Courtyard Steps first Tuesday of every month. In 2015, legislation passed laws to allow that process to go on 100% online. We created a platform to help accommodate that. In front of you, we placed a packet that has listed benefits on the first page. One of our main counties, Hidalgo County, these are some of the benefits that we provided to them. But one of the things I would really like to address is how we increased their customer base. So we were able to increase their customer base. It started back in May of 2022. Their customer, their projected bidder base was around 50 to 100 bidders on average, dependent upon the amount of auctions. We've increased that to 1,400 potential bidders over the course since we launched. That in turn increased their close rate. So their close rate was around 60 to 70% for auctions closing at a successful rate. We increased that to over 90%. And this is something that we can help all the counties of Texas with, including Dimmitt County. The greatest part about this whole process is it's at zero cost to the county. So it's literally, it saves money in every aspect. And it allows us to work hand in hand with the county. We work with the specialized county officials, the, for example, the sheriff, the tax assessor collector, and this whole process. We work with all the law firms representing the county. So in this case, Purdue Brandon and Carlos, we be working hand in hand with. That's who we basically get our auction list from. All we are is a platform that allows us to help increase your close rate, increase your sales, increase your bidder base. We also have, we have the ability also to increase that 1,400 to even more bidders than that. Ryan, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, so as Corey's saying, the brilliance in this platform is that, I'm sure you guys are looking at that first page on your screen. That is in overages. So as you can see, once we plug this program in, this platform, you can see that is a large number in overages. And what's significant about the year after that is you see a 33% in overages from that current number. I don't know if you can see that on our first page. So from 2.6 to 3.6. We give you a new problem, which is how do we spend this money, right? And one of the main features that we like to boast about is that we're putting more eyes on you, not just as Dimmitt County, but specifically in Carizo Springs here. And, you know, through our bidders, through our online platform, as well as through our real estate piece. So we're licensed real estate brokers here in the state of, great state of Texas. And we can plug into any MLS system in any city. So I'm sure you've read of the big names like Zillow, Trulia, Realtor.com. So imagine the eyes and the attention that we can draw to you using these platforms. So it's a all-in-one type of system. And finally, we are refined in social media ads. As I'm sure you've seen during, especially during election times, you see all these ads fly across your social media. That's us. We know how to do that. We know how to target and specifically drive traffic.
One of the questions you may be asking yourself is, and let's say you have 10 bidders. They typically show up on the County Courtyard Steps to bid in these auctions. How do you jump from 10 bidders to 14 bidders in a quick time span? Well, the answer to that is, for example, Hidalgo County's bidders, the bidders in our user database immediately become your bidders because we immediately advertise to them, letting them know about your auctions side by side with Hidalgo County's auctions. So they get to bid in both auctions at the same time. Whereas before, when you do it on the County Courtyard Steps, you can only be at one place at one time, and that is it. With online, you expand that. The other forum here, just quick, it's next steps. What we would like to do is a formal presentation to the official county representatives, including the tax assessor collector, including the sheriff, just showing them how our auction process works using some demo auctions. And then from there, typically what would happen, it would go to a vote. We don't want to leave y'all empty-handed. Basically, what we provided here, we provided a vote showing how it was worded in Hidalgo County for the legislation, for the agenda. So if that, if need be, if y'all need some information there, that will help. Also, the most important thing is the last packet, it's the rules and regs that were passed in Hidalgo County. Literally, these rules and regs can be used for any county, including Dimmitt County, for taking this process online.
So as Corey's mentioned, we tried to streamline this process and make it as efficient and as pain-free as possible. We try to put ourselves in your shoes. And to summarize, we have a online platform that handles all your tax sale foreclosures. We have the ability to refine that further by adding it to MLS, giving you that real estate power. We refine it even further by adding the ads in the social media campaigns that we do. And finally, one of my favorite things about Texas is that we operate on a handshake agreement. Meaning you have the contract with us, but it is, it gives you the capability to terminate at any time. So it's one of those, we're so confident in our, in our system, in our process, in our program that it's a, again, we try to make it as pain-free as possible for you. So it's one of those, you don't like our performance, you can terminate at any time. And just so you know, no one has pulled that trigger on that.
Any questions?
You're not asking where to sign?
Well, it was good seeing you all again. Thank you so much.
This is an informational item, so no action. 2.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Authorize Arquitectura SA to request proposals for the geotechnical testing required for the construction engineering of the proposed buildings at the county park. Again, this is just to formalize it in Commissioners' Court to allow the architect, Mr. Calzada, to go out for bids for the soil testing of the proposed Dimmitt County Sports Complex. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Questions?
Who's the engineer, Dan?
This is not civil engineering. This is geotechnical. This is just for the soil testing.
I know, but you're requesting to give permission for construction and engineering. So who's the engineer?
No, it's the testing for the construction. And in order for us to start construction, in order for us to start the engineering, there has to be testing of the soil. So he's asking for us to go out for bids for someone to come test the soil. We did talk to Dan. He, they don't, Dan doesn't do that. It's, Dan does this separate. Dan's going to be doing the survey and all that stuff for us as an engineer, which we discussed with him last Friday. But this is in particular for the soil. So it's different.
And just to obtain, contact different suppliers and get different vendors with the bids, and we'll bring them up. I understand.
When you mention engineer, could we pay Dan involved to do this kind of the testing? That's why I was asking.
Typically, the soil testing should work for the owner. It should work for the county, not for me or Dan.
So you're the one that's going to go out for bids?
I will request the proposals, yes. But on behalf of the county.
Other questions? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Requesting approval to metal detect county property.
Are we going out for bids here?
No, this is an individual that submitted a letter. It's in the package. It says Matthew Young, but he's not here, so. Motion to table by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second, Commissioner Rubo Kawa? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.5 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Adopt proclamation and support community council in weatherization date. I have the proclamation here before me naming October 30, 2023, as weatherization date in Dimmitt County. Whereas the CAP Community Council of South Central Texas was established as Community Action Agency on May 11, 1965. And whereas the Weatherization Service area encompasses the South Central, Southwest Texas counties of Dimmitt, Edwards, Kenny, LaSalle, Maverick, Real, Uvalde, Valverde, and Savala. And whereas Dimmitt County has long-recognized supply of low-income families and individuals in meeting their home energy needs. And whereas low-income households spend a disproportionate percentage of their annual incomes on home energy bills. And whereas the United States Department of Energy developed the Weatherization Assistance Program in 1976 as a federal government's cost-effective, permanent solution for reducing the heavy energy burden on low-income Americans. And whereas the program not only saves energy through advanced technologies to improve the energy affordability for low-income families, but also saves lives and improves the health and safety of families by identifying carbon monoxide hazards, poor indoor air quality, mold, and other health threats. And whereas the Weatherization Assistance Program keeps jobs and dollars in local communities by operating through a network of well-trained programs serving nine counties in the CCSCT service area. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Marta Ponse, Dimmitt County Judge, do hereby proclaim October 30, 2023, as weatherization date in Dimmitt County and encourage state and local weatherization professionals to deliver cost-effective, advanced technologies to increase energy savings in each home served to leverage state, local, and private resources to make each federal dollar work harder and to heighten the awareness of energy efficiency in communities throughout the state of Texas. It witness whereof I hereon to set my hand and cause the great seal of Dimmitt County, State of Texas, to be affixed, passed and approved by, on this date, October the 23rd, 2023. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Rubo Kawa. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Never mind. Discussion?
Mr. Diaz, who's the charge on this program?
We don't have that program.
Who's got it? Who runs this program?
Seguin, but they have satellite office in Uvalde.
Okay, so what does Mr.? Pogeda, what does he, what does he do? I mean, what is the, the weather station, right?
Yeah, but it's through AEP, directly from AEP. We don't deal to Texas Department of Community Affairs, who's Seguin or Uvalde. It's a different program.
So you don't realize the one that runs it?
No. Community Council of Seguin runs that, but they have a satellite office in Uvalde. They used to have an office here in Middle Rio, but they closed it down, I'm not quite. But.
The reason I'm asking is because I have seen people, Mr. Pogeda, and they come back and tell me there's no bonds or they don't, they don't have any information whatsoever. So that's why I was wondering.
No, our weather station is limited. It doesn't provide.
Mr. Diaz, if you can come to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. That program we used to have in Hidalgo, and it's a nine-county program. But Seguin has the program now. They provide weather station for the people in the community, in the counties. Through our agency, we have a weather station through AEP that is completely different from their part.
So how do they apply for this?
Through Texas Department of Community Affairs. And they get all the statistics from the nine counties to provide.
The question is, do they apply for it here?
For here? I really don't know. I think they do it online now. The chances.
What about the ones that don't have computers?
The what?
The elderly that doesn't have computers.
I know. It's a hassle. I mean, we do our best, what we have, and we target elderly on the weather system program that we have through, through AEP. But Community Council, they cover all the areas in the area. And I don't know how they go about to approaching the elderly population. I know that we have a lot of referrals, but usually what they, what they want, we don't have. We simply just applied for some grants for repair roofs for the elderly because that has been one of the problems we've been having where you can't do anything to this home unless the roof is fixed. Otherwise, you do insulation or whatever you tend to hold down.
So our best bet would go to Middle Rio and ask how it works?
I don't think Middle Rio would give you the information.
Because it's hard for us to get a hold of Seguin. We don't even know. I thought this was part of the one that.
No, that Community Council, Seguin, Central Center of Texas.
So how can we apply to get it here for Dimmitt County?
You probably have to approach them and ask them for statistics, you know, how many people need help. I know that the Texas Department of Community Affairs, they have a quota or numbers of people that's supposed to serve for county. But I don't know how they distribute it now. But we will get a lot of people that say they want the services, but we don't have it because we refer them to Uvalde, and they say, well, we have a hard time trying to get the benefits because we have to be online. Community Council used to be in, in Rio, but they, I think they have an office in Crystal City. I think they have an office in Crystal City. I'm not sure whether it's over there by the ambulance as you go in town. That's what they have to have.
I appreciate it. I'm sorry I put you in the.
No, no problem.
This was part of.
It's a good program, you know, for, for the elderly. Like I say, you know, ours, you know, we're going to have, it's going to be to repair roofs for the elderly. Because a lot of times, like they'd say that people from Community Council or from Uvalde, you apply, elderly apply, they say, well, I can help you because the roof leaks. I cannot help you put insulation because the roof leaks. So we're trying to see if we can come in and work with them, or we can say, okay, we picked the roof up. So and so, when it's ready, come and see if you can do a weather station for them, you know. That's an application process, and I know they have a long waiting list of, it's best that you find some elderly. Tell them to call me, and I'll give them reference information how to go about it. If they have an application depending on for a couple of years or another year, they need to renew it because their income changes every year. And if they don't do that, then they're not going to put on.
Other discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Discussion and Appropriate Action. Adopted Texas Department of Agriculture Home Delivered Meal Resolution, authorizing county grant program year 2024.
You can answer it for me.
That's a resolution that we sent, bring into the county every year to apply for grants from Texas Department of Agriculture.
A resolution of the County of Dimmitt County, Texas, certifying that the county has made a grant to Community Service Agency of South Texas, an organization that provides home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county of Dimmitt who are elderly and or have a disability, and certifying that the county has approved the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent. Whereas the organization seeks to apply for grant funds from the Texas Department of Agriculture to supplement and extend existing services for homebound persons in the county of Dimmitt who are elderly and or have a disability pursuant to Home Delivered Meal Grant Program. Whereas the program rules require Dimmitt County, in which an organization is providing home-delivered meals to make a grant to the organization in order for the organization to be eligible to receive funds. And whereas the program rules further require the county approve the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent in order for the organization to be eligible to receive program grant funds. Be it resolved by the county hereby certifies it has made a grant to the organization in the amount of $170 to be used between September 1st of 2023 and August 31st of 2024. That county hereby certifies the organization home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county of Dimmitt who are elderly or have a disability. The county hereby certifies that it has approved the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent, which means financial management system requirement set forth in the Texas Grant Management Standards promulgated by the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. Introduced, read, and passed by affirmative vote of the county on the 23rd of October, 2023. Signed, Marta Ponse, County Judge. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Rubo Kawa. Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you. Thank you.
2.7 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly report from JP Precinct One, Sonia Guerrero Perez, for the month of September, 2023. Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Is there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question. Is everything okay upstairs in the courtroom?
No, the air conditioner still hasn't been completely fixed. I just found out on Friday from Mr. Ramos. It's been over six months since it's been broken. I have the floor key. So it's been over six months since I came to Commissioners' Court and requested it, you know. Mr. Ramos found out, I believe, last week during district court, that the jail cell was really hot. And so supposedly, my office and the cell that's inside the district courtroom is connected. So they've been finagling with it, messing with it, and so he says it's working. Yes, on Friday, when I went up there, it was still really warm. He said he was going to take off this little part right here and see if it worked. But as of right now, he's still working on.
May I?
Yes.
First of all, is the problem being looked at? There's no technician in Dimmitt County that one who's trained, trained air conditioners. We're trying to locate people from outside. As a matter of fact, we just submitted some contract with Mr. Pereira to look him over to let us know because this company that we have local here has no idea on what's, and we've been dealing with this. It's not that it's being neglected or anything like that because, as I say, for months, we've been working it for months. Just want to set the record straight that we do not leave problems just standing here. There's no technician that wants to do this. Mr. Calzada is one of the witnesses that, well, no, we're not talking about him. Mr. Calzada is one of the witnesses for, it takes a trained certified personnel to repair those air conditioners.
I understand.
They're not being neglected?
When the second floor was being looked at.
They're not being neglected? As a matter of fact, we found out also that those air conditioners have that, whatever drainage there is, they're all plugged up. So we're getting people to come and clear the drainings so they can start working.
I was being updated by Mr. Ramos, our custodian. He was the only one that was informing me what's going on because I could not get any other information from anybody else. So Mr. Ramos was the one that would advise me the situation. And I know that when they came. And I know that when they came to fix the second floor about three, four months ago, they asked if they were gonna check the third floor, and there was no work order for the fourth floor. So I know that Mr. Ramos has been trying to take care of it. So he's the one that's been updating.
If anything, contact me. I'm the director. You can't change.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urenda.
Also, I thought that third floor was only for this.
Did you get?
The what?
That third floor was only for, 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 for the district. All the offices are for the district office.
Her offices are behind the restrooms and the grand jury room and the, and the constable.
So what about the office downstairs, second floor?
It's still the JP. She has an office on the third floor. The constable has an office on the third floor.
Well, there is five. You have one, just has one office, correct?
She has it.
You have one office for your secretary, is that correct?
Yes, because I was offered one.
He was offered an office at the, at the third floor, and he chose to sit with his secretary, correct?
That office is for only for this. Because that's what we're told. Now, if you all wanna change, you need to bring it before Commissioner's Court so we can approve it.
Commissioner, Judge, how long have you been there? Six months?
Since April.
Right, but you all knew without the consent of the Commissioner's Court, correct?
We moved.
You all knew about it.
I was approached by the county judge, that the district judge had told her she didn't need those offices.
Correct.
And I could use that office. So we were all offered an office up there. I know that we were offered a long time ago to come move over here as well. I did not want to move over here through the previous administration. When I did choose to move over here, I was offered an office. I'm explaining the situation. They gave us an office, both of us upstairs. Judges gave up decline. I did not, so I have my office.
Correct, but it was brought before Commissioner's Court before, right?
Why would it be brought before Commissioner's Court? When Ms. Maricela Gonzalez moved over, she didn't come before Commissioner's Court.
Who?
When Ms. Gonzalez moved.
That's why I'm saying, everything we all do is gotta get permission from Commissioner's Court. That's the way it runs. Mr. Gonzalez, is that right or am I wrong? Because that's what they told us at the seminar, that Commissioner's Court make all the decisions.
No, sir. When I called tech, I specifically asked.
I.
Commissioner, I would not have them move over here without the consent of the court if I knew I needed the consent of the court. And when I, that's exactly what you're saying. You're saying that I let them come over here without asking the court, and that's completely incorrect. When I asked.
Well, you think it's incorrect. I think I'm correct, so I don't know what's right or wrong. That's why I asked you, Mr. Gonzalez.
I specifically called tech because the previous administration, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Gonzalez, the previous administration, Judge Frank Ponce, had requested for you to come over here, as he did to you guys. And all of y'all said no. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it wasn't gonna go through Commissioner's Court, because I called tech. No, sir, it was not.
It was, it was through Commissioner's Court.
If I, if I may say something. So initially, when this building was built, the District Court's office was supposed to be housed where we're at now.
Correct.
The only issue was that the previous administration wanted me to split my staff. I refused to do that. It would be hard for me to juggle between buildings. And my office is not fully automated. And so we have to pull files. We still have to do searches manually. And that was one of the reasons that I did not, I decided to move. So Judge Ponce asked me if I wanted to move over here. I said, if I can move my whole staff, then I would be willing to move. And so that's what happened. But initially, that office space had always been allocated for the district.
But my, my, my point is that even though we go to seminars, they tell us that, right? And that's why I'm getting the opinion, if I'm wrong, I'll apologize. But there's the, there's the thing that, that Mr. Allison and all those people tell us, Commissioner's Court, it's a mistake. Now, there's a concern that's up there on the third floor. Because they've brought up to my attention by choice. There's too many people going up there that are not authorized to go up there. And since he's got sensitive equipment, she's afraid that somebody could might disappear.
I spoke to her, and she did say that someone is getting access to, not that area, but her area. She said she came to court. She came and spoke to me. And she said that some of her belongings in her chambers have been moved. And that's why I sent that email regarding the use of this side door. Because it's my distinct understanding that the JP secretary caught a man up there lurking around randomly. And that same man had came in through this side door.
But the fault is kind of that man. The fault is one of the people that are using that door.
Correct, and that's why I sent that email.
And said.
Where you replied to everybody, not just to me.
And I replied back to everybody that the issue is not that the people are coming from outside. Or I don't, I remember how I explained it, but the issue is interior. Because even some elected officials use that door, not noticing that they doesn't lock when they walk in. And if it's any of the other commissioners, I'm not sure if it is. But I'm willing not to use those doors because I always come into the front. And my staff is done, and my guys have been told that if they're gonna come in, they come into the front. Because I wanna lock down and register.
I agree. I agree. And we still have individuals that don't work for the county that still have access to the courthouse.
Again, that falls.
That doesn't fall on me.
It falls on me and we're correct. The technology belongs to me. I'm not afraid to say.
I'm not saying this. All I'm saying is.
We're gonna take care of all of it. Once I get the new company, everything will run smoothly, comfortably, comfortably, not. We'll correct it again.
One of my suggestions, Commissioner, is I would ask, and this is a suggestion I'm not telling you. Maybe just kill all the IDs and everybody uses the front door?
The what?
The carts?
Yeah, very important.
I mean, that would be something that.
They can only come to the front?
Yeah.
But nobody has access to come in through here. No, sir. Marky killed them. Mark, they don't work. No. They're not to this side. You can only exit. Am I correct, Marky?
I can come into that door if I want.
Through that door, I believe that one's open, through the cart only.
For everybody?
That one's dead on the side, yeah.
So then we just need to have him kill this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that eliminates the problem.
But people are still exiting through here. Mr. Pereira's one of them.
If you see him, reprimand him, fire him, whatever it takes.
I can't fire Mr. Pereira. That's the district judge.
If I catch employees, if I catch one, how you feel you're indisputing my rights? What are you gonna do?
And it's really only the commissioners and like the higher ups that have access to that door?
Anyway, Mr. Watcher.
Well, based on your rationale, then I'm guilty too. If I'm going over to the District Clerk's office in the other building without, you know, any authorization from commissioners.
I can, I can hire you.
I said, you know, if you're using your rationale, then I'm guilty too because I went over to the District Clerk's home office in the other building just because I didn't have the space I had over there, but I had given up the jury room.
Well, no, but my question is, am I right or am I wrong? So that way I will bring it up again.
Formality, they should come. It's just a formality, you know, but it, and the room's there, and the kind of touch of prison, I don't see a problem. But it's more of a formality. Everybody knows, you know, what's happening, but. I'm not aware of any specific rule that says it must be preapproved by Commissioner's Court before they can make the move.
So if I don't get a copy of what Mr. Allison said and told you, then you won't change your mind, right?
Sure, if you want me to review something, you know.
Because a lot of time we say, well, already talked and already.
So you got Commissioner's Court approval to move to Danny Estrada's office, or you just moved in there?
I have a review of the former news station.
Go in there.
Well, that office already exists.
But the point of the matter is that he still moved without the permission of the Commissioner's Court. And when I spoke to tech.
The, the utilities and departmental services.
But that's not his office. He just moved in there because Judge Ponce told him to move Commissioner Carmona. And when I called tech.
His office doesn't mean money. As a commissioner or a utility?
He moved in there as a commissioner?
They explained this to me because.
I did explain myself.
His office means that he came in as a utility.
I think the problem is, is y'all have a problem with Judge Perez and don't want her to because the constable's there. Danny just moved over there.
You're the ones that the commissioners are having a problem with. So let it be known.
Let it be known that I'm completely speculating.
No, but you said you all have a problem.
Isn't that a speculation, Danny?
No.
Isn't that the proper word, speculating?
No, but you didn't say speculating.
I'm speculating because there was never issue. Let it be known. Let it be known.
She accused us.
Let it be known.
Having something against.
Let it be known, because this is always the same issue over and over and over. She's been there for six months, Commissioner? For six months, she's been there?
Remember the first day I told you this?
And I told you that I called, I, I called.
I'm not pointing at you.
You just pointed at me right now?
No, I said.
I told you that I, he pointed at me, did he not? Thank you very much. Read this.
I will not.
No, sir, you pointed at me.
Well, no, let's just keep going.
Yeah, you're getting off track. Let's get back on the.
We are getting off track. We are getting off track. We're getting off track because Commissioner Juan wanted us to get off track.
The judge responded to my.
Is there a motion to the judge's group or motion for a group report?
By the way, I am the officer of the court, Mr. Gonzalez.
I'm trying to get to that contact.
Okay, but I'm trying to make the record clear because I'm not, Mr. Juan is saying something that's not true.
That's not my intent. Step by step, yes.
What are, what are you saying that it's not true, man?
What is it?
I wanna know for the record, why is it that I'm saying it's not?
Because I spoke to you about this. You called me specifically.
And I told you that you didn't take permission as court.
Yes, you spoke to me.
Okay, that's it.
You spoke to me and you told me, you spoke to me and you told me that I was being taken advantage by the JP's.
You, you.
That's what you told me.
All right.
So what did I do?
People, you're new, and they're gonna tell you a lot of stuff.
And I under, and I understand that.
I need to.
And you said the JP's.
Anybody, I said, be taken care of, not just the judge.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. And what did I do? I took your advice and I called tech.
Okay.
I called tech based on your advice.
Right, good.
So I called tech.
At least one time.
I did.
Okay.
And I called tech, and tech told me that as the county judge, I had the authority of the courthouse to move offices. And I wanted that clarified. And so that's why I did that.
So I tied this to the function.
But I'm not.
I just pointed.
Oh, anyway. Throw that down because, hey, you're talking to the wrong person. I moved the heat hole, heat hole in contempt. I make a motion.
How did I do?
Got a motion on the floor. Can you send us?
I sent it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. The judge can't make the.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, you know.
The judge can ask for the, the.
No, 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 sir. Majority rules, that board, that board. Not one person, not two person, three persons run the board. You know that.
But you cannot ask for the vote.
Well, sir, with all due respect, don't be that.
He bumped into me.
No, 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 regardless of what it is.
You're accusing of, of.
I don't laugh.
He bumped into me.
It's not a laughing matter.
It is. It's going on and on. Just because I moved up there, I never asked him over there. The judge asked me. No, wait. He asked, she asked if I wanted to move. I said yes. You're laughing, and no one told you.
I'm not laughing. I'm just like, what the heck is like?
She's saying you asked her, now you're saying she told you.
I would be on the scope of the.
Yes.
They should, I don't, please move on. That's all I'm saying. We're not laughing.
All right, well, gee, it's very simple. Don't talk, don't talk your thing.
But there wasn't intention. It's like a way of lies.
Okay.
Because the people acting towards me, you mean, you look at me in aggressive manner, I'm not gonna talk about that.
I don't either, sir. I, I, I guarantee you one thing. I don't, I don't back down from anything. You know that.
Keep saying that. So I don't back down either.
Let it be known that I need to tell the county attorney I do not back down, probably down. In case anything happens, they already know. Fine. Good.
There was a motion by Commissioner Urenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.8 Discussion and Approval of JP Sonia Perez to Attend the TJCTC Justice of the Peace Seminar on April 17, 19 through the 19th in Austin, Texas. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda. Is there a second?
Second, but it doesn't have the whole till.
Let me see, Commissioner. Um, you're right. It says P.O. number.
Oh, I believe it's already been sent off, but I'll check when, uh, Rosie, because I always have to do it before and on and registration. I'll have it and I'll wait until. No, it's here, but it's not included, so that's why I was asking. On the chart because it's not included. That's all it was.
On the, on the voucher?
There's, there's no total.
Are you, is still a second, Commissioner Drogukawa?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
2.9 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 2, Mr. Alberto Esquio for the month of September.
Good morning. Morning, morning.
Any questions? Motion by Commissioner Drogukawa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion?
Do you have any other issue problem again?
I have already. I had to put fine in there.
So.
I was going in there this morning.
In future reference, contact me.
Yes, sir. Sure.
And I'll get it right away.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for JP Alberto Esquio to Attend the TJCTC Justice of the Peace Seminar January 21st, 2023 in Corpus Christi, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Drogukawa. This has the same thing.
I just wanna make sure because.
Yes, ma'am.
On the dollar, I'm not, I'm just approving this, but then I'm approving the reimbursement. So then check, there you go.
It's also missing the same thing, so I don't know if you wanna ask your admin on the amount for the whole till. How about a motion by Commissioner Drogukawa? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. You'll have a nice day.
Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from JP Precinct 3, Ms. Letizia Hernandez for the month of September of 2023.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
There any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Drogukawa.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Judge, Ms. Hernandez, I told me, and told me that there was some mistakes on her budget, also on her secretary's budget, so whenever we reach a red flag, we'll actually make a point of it. Whenever we accept the, uh, the amendments.
The adjustments? There's budget adjustments?
Yes, ma'am.
In regards to?
Somehow we missed the secretary and took away the, her travel, took away some of the money. Our travel was taken away. Yeah, I know he, I talked to him already. He said he maybe he overlooked it or whatever, yeah. And also she, uh. And her, she's making the trips again. So she wanted to talk to us whenever we tell that. Correct?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for JP Letizia Hernandez to Attend the TJCTC Justice of the Peace Seminar. the TJ CTC Justice of the Peace Seminar on January twenty first, twenty four in Corpus Christi.
Who made the, uh, I noticed that all of them are the same, you know, they all, they all got P.O.s only.
I think they haven't sent the actual permission to me for the hotel and all of that. I think that's why they're like that.
But the district secretary did?
Yes, she did.
Because she truly, we all write it down.
Right. I think, I think from what she said is because-
They already prepaid for the hotel. But this one has an amount, the other two didn't. So I'm not, I'm not too sure because yours says, it says one sixty-five and one, yeah, I don't, I'm not, I don't know why they did that. Maybe Mr. Pereira does not hear, sorry, I don't know.
I think that's what I was gonna say. I mean, we have a lot of issues with this whole, um, and sometimes we use our, our-
Our own credit card, we are using.
Just for the-
To hold it.
Coincidence, or what do they call, uh-
Incendials.
Coincidence. Oh, it's not coincidental. It's, it's a little, but they go ahead and charge us the whole, the whole way?
They do.
Yeah, and so we need to find a better solution than maybe broke at the bank by the time I, I get up there and, or it's embarrassing when they tell you, I mean, I have money, but in the savings, I gotta transfer it. But it's embarrassing when you're there standing in front of people and they tell you-
Your card was declined.
Because it doesn't take about thirty seconds for my daughter to move money over, but it's embarrassing.
I agree. I agree, I, I agree.
If you keep it alone, that's-
No, I'm gonna go collect aluminum cans. But I mean, that's, that's, that's one of the things that I see a lot, that we have now more and more issues with this, with our cards thing.
I think it's maybe a policy procedure that we can get with Mr. Pereira and discuss that with him. So that perhaps there can be court, county issued credit cards for the Commissioner's Court and then one that can be used by the other elected officials for that purpose.
Yes.
Because I know other counties do that. I know other counties, um, have, they carry, um, county issued cards that are specified for that. I know, for instance, when I worked with the district attorney in Uvalde, my boss, Christina had a card that said Christina Bosbín, it said County of Uvalde, and that specific card was what was used to hold any hotels for staff or for herself. So that's a possibility that we can discuss with Mr. Pereira, um, in regards to the incidentals and other, that we just state.
I mean, I think, uh,
the problem was that a lot of elected officials canceled at the S M U and the county got charged and then the person that didn't vote didn't wanna reimburse the county for the hotel. So that's the reason that he, he put the restriction under, but we can, we change it.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for JP Alonso's travel. Motion by Commissioner Luca. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oren. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Judge. Two point thirteen, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP Precinct Four, Mr. Alfredo Martinez for the month of September twenty twenty-three.
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Any questions?
So what?
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oren. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action approval for JP Alfredo Martinez to attend the TJ CTC Justice of the Peace Seminar on January twenty first through the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four in Corpus Christi, Texas. Were there any questions?
So what?
Motion by Commissioner Valerie Luca. Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Two point fifteen, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from District Clerk, Ms. Maricela González for the month of September twenty twenty-three.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner.
Morning.
Were there any questions? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Luca. Discussion?
Mr. Pereira, Ms. Mari and the third row have a problem with the air conditioner. When are we gonna put it out for bed, for train? Remember I told you about three or four weeks ago?
The next weekend.
I thought it was gonna be on this agenda.
He didn't put it?
No.
My office didn't get anything for it.
No, I did, I did say it.
He said he-
Good morning. These people are having a lot of problems and then we get into the discussion here because something they can be remedying. So let's get on.
And then, and again, then we're trying to address the air condition and everything.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We'll thank you while it's open. They're waiting on this man.
We're sorry about the, uh-
We apologize.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Two point sixteen, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from County Clerk, Mr. Mario Garcia for the month of September twenty twenty-three. Claims were good.
Pretty average month, Judge, Commissioner. I just wanna remind the board and the public that we have started early voting today and there are designated parking spaces for voters that are there to, to ask about it.
Mr. Garcia.
Questions?
Mr. Garcia, I went into your building, your building, the whole courthouse and, 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 and there's a bad smell of, uh-
Yes, yes.
And I did advise Commissioner Carmona about it, but the deal is that he, they gotta put water in the drains because the gas or the sewer goes out. So if there's no water in, in the, any drain, you'll have that smell forever. So I told him to go ahead and, uh, and put water to advise it.
I guess, because it's not flush that often?
No, no, not flush it, but you know, the seams on the floor, I mean, those, uh, drains on the floor, those are the ones that dry up because there's no, uh, water or mop or anything like that. Those are the ones that, that smell.
I've been addressing the issue for a long time. I have advised, uh, Mr. Garcia, the staff there since it's not in use, at least flush it several times a day, because when it was in use, it was working. Now I advise them to use a pencil.
And I advise you.
No, 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 no. What's this? When have I been addressing this? Since everybody moved out, right, Mr. Garcia? Nobody, it didn't just happen because somebody notified me. I've been addressing this issue since everybody moved. And I told them, pencil, Fabuloso, whatever, drawing those drains and it'll happen. But the lack, the lack of flood, the lack of flushing and all that, somebody said, um, somebody is, uh, what I, what I've addressed is that you, is that funny? Can you hear it?
I'm happy because I'm there because-
I mean, all these people are here laughing at me because I'm explaining the system and yet it's a serious issue. They can get sick from that.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I don't address your buildings. I don't address anything else.
That's, that's, that's a public building, sir.
Well, I understand, but-
And somebody walk in there and walk out. It's not my buildings, it's the county's. The county's building. All the, all these buildings here belong to the county.
I understand.
It would take, it would, we would take Juan Carmona, then I would be a green person and take it by-
It doesn't have to say Juan Carmona. It was, it was according to the previous judge, he assigned it to me, so I'm doing a lot more research about it. It was very long before.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Might I address that?
Thank you.
See, nothing funny about what teacher, Joe, this is you, you're on my-
The last name is Vance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, don't, don't correct me here, Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
Now, I, I can make it smart to remove you?
That's fine. Go ahead. I, I, I don't get upset just because I'll get up there.
No, I do because you're, you're making a laughter out of me. Let it be known, sir. Well, that's pretty good.
Okay, sorry.
Do I entertain a motion?
So what?
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oren. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point one seven, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Commissioners Precinct One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven. Are there any questions in regards to Precinct One? Any questions in regards to Commissioner Precinct Two?
Because we're still working on the painting. The, the contractors are still working on the painting. We're trying to get to the bottom. Why it's taking so long? It should have been done probably about three weeks ago. So we're trying to get to the bottom of it. We don't know. We have that sand issue that they had nine so and the sand is set up. So we're trying to get a solution to it. But after that, all the roads are being, will maintain and will catch, that's our ability.
Any questions in regards to Precinct Three and Six? Any questions in regards to Precinct Four, Five, and Seven? How I entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Luca, second by Commissioner Oren. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point one, discussion and appropriate action approval to post signs of non-truck traffic on Bradshaw Road.
Major.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Judge, I've received, uh, several phone calls from constituents that they have home of Bradshaw Road. And it seems that so many sand trucks, sand haulers, for some reason or another, are taking that diversion and going around Bradshaw Road to, um, I, I don't know if it feels like a shortcut, it really isn't. But it's taking a toll on the road and it seems to be a hazard for the people that are out there. I'm questioning the permission of the court to install a no-truck traffic signs.
Um, any questions?
Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
On, on Bradshaw Road, is it part of it of FM twenty-three sixty-eight?
Um, it, it intersects with twenty-three sixty-eight.
But there's a part that runs all the way that's taped to, to twenty-three sixty-eight. Are, are you planning to do that on also or just jump?
Uh, from, from where it comes in at twenty-three sixty-eight to where it comes out on the money, Major.
Because, and Major, I mean, you, you're familiar with the project, right, with that road? Part of it is FM twenty-three sixty-eight, right?
Yeah, and then state maintenance ends. And right before you get to the Bradshaw, to the, the carry road, and then it goes around and hits twenty-six.
Yeah, but what, the pavement ends in, by Gary Box, I believe.
No, it's further up.
Or Gary, I'm sorry, Gary Brown, uh, uh, they're all Gary's. Uh, but, but, but there by Gary Brown, it, it ends right around there, no?
No, it goes further up.
Okay, but that belongs in Texas.
Yeah, belongs in Texas. As soon as the state-
Mr. Crimmins, can you, can you approach the microphone, please?
As soon as the state maintenance is, then it becomes-
That's what I mean, but we can't make it through, for Texas, that, that road. So that's why I'm asking, yeah.
Well, we, we can post a sign on the carry road down the FM road.
Okay, that's, that, that was my question because I know Texas has part of it.
Yeah, no, it would just be on the carry road, on the carry road.
Another question?
Mr. G, that's supposed to have an hour, isn't it, correct?
Or minutes?
I tried to close, uh, uh, Duncan Street. I have to make a, try to make a resolution and all of that stuff.
I don't think that the request is to close the road totally. If you're closing the road totally, then you, you need to file the proper motion.
It's just no, no truck traffic.
Yes, and the only concern I have with that is that you have a oil and gas business out there and then when Gary Brown is moving mobile homes in and out, are they gonna be subject to the same restriction?
Uh, no, so-
This is further down.
What?
Go ahead.
When they move a mobile home, uh, automatically they have to obtain the state permit to move it because of the size of the mobile.
There's no permit for the county?
Right. No, no. It's so, it, it, it may be just at adjacent ends of that, of that road, they would encounter a state road. So regardless of which direction they go on, for there, they still have to have a permit because they're gonna go on state road. These truck traffic, um, no truck traffic signs would be in the county area past that oil field company. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't involve them. It would just keep the sand trucks or any backing truck from going through that route. So could they have one eighty-six straight shot?
And if that oil field company wanted to go, uh, towards Bradshaw Road and come out on one eighty-six, then can you put those signs, would they be prohibited in Minnesota?
Uh, depending on the size of the road. If they're coming up with a trailer and a backhoe, not really. If it's an eighteen wheeler, yeah.
They have eighteen units and they have grilling units.
Yeah, and they really don't, it's really not a suitable road to use with eighteen wheeler because it's got the, the right ninety turn line. And it's really a hazardous, uh, point because oncoming traffic, then with a big trailer, you have to make wide turns. They don't have the space. And that's why these people have been calling because they hadn't had this issue before and they, they really, their, their clarification was it was, it's more sand haulers that are trying, they think they're lost when they do, uh, because they're not from here.
GPS.
But, but, but my question is, when we did, uh, Oren, I would say, is it Oren, no, there are- Bendel, we had to make a, a resolution. Will they take care of the one he's trying to make?
No, he, all he's doing is trying to restrict traffic or-
Right, that no to traffic, that's what he said, no trucks, no oil field.
No, no oil field trucks or no sand trucks. Uh, I believe on the statutes you have the authority to restrict the speed and the size of the trucks uh, by weight without having to pass an ordinance.
Okay, but you just made a good point. If, 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 if somebody's taking a backhoe with a low boy, they can go in there or they move in a trailer because that would be, that the tractor would be considered a trailer, right?
That, that's a concern because Gary Brown moves in trailers or all the time.
That's what that permit for. When you obtain a permit, even if you have a restriction, the permit allows you to travel through it. I just picked, I just purchased a permit this morning for, unless you're being removed from twenty-six eighty-eight, and they have a restriction because of the, uh, because of the construction. But that's what the permit's for. When you obtain the permit, it gives you direct, either authorization or no authorization to move through it with the permit.
That's, so that's correct. What about the oil and gas company that's been out there for years? I believe there's two, there's the DW something.
The one at the very beginning?
Yeah.
There, there, other than that is, it's, uh, it's, uh, you know where the mobile homes are, right?
Right.
That's all residential.
Right.
The oil field companies at the very beginning.
Yeah, on your right hand side, right. And then there was the third road, but before you get to that one, it, uh-
The Bradshaw?
Yeah, DWS, civil service, I don't know, there's lock ring?
No, that, that's it right there, that where you turn to, uh, what used to be Ricey Road to the right. And, and there's a cattle guard, that's where that company is at, right at the corner of, of Bradshaw's place.
The Suzano's.
And that's it. So the sign would be passed that, that company.
I, I don't have a problem, Mr. Oren, with that, but I just don't want it because I know that the, uh, city, if there's a trailer house coming through there, it says, uh, all other vehicles, the big traders go around, they sight them when they, they cross to the city ordinance. That's why I was just wondering.
I'm just, I'm, I'm-
And they, they have, uh, a permit to drive, but the city ordinance prohibits them from, from going through there.
With a, with a state permit, if you obtain state permit, even, I'm just telling you, just, I just got one, even if there's a, um, whatever rules the city has or county, if you have a state permit from the state of Texas.
It's like an exception.
It's an exception. You, you, because if you, give me an example, if you come in with a mobile home and you have to go on Nine Street, I'm just giving a example, you can't fly it in, you gotta go with it. So even if the city has a restriction, if you obtain a permit, it gives you the authorization from the state to break in that specifically.
It's a perceived threat.
That's fine. I just wouldn't make-
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just.
But there's a difference then, on the permit, you got to accept which way to travel, correct? You can take 9th Street or 1st Street and then, right?
Right.
But if they're going the wrong way, then they get sighted. Because you've got a marked path from the state for to go, correct?
If they're going the wrong way, then they shouldn't.
Well, regardless, if they shouldn't have, that's my point, what I'm trying to say. You're making it very clear that the state overrides the county or the city or whatever, right?
Correct.
But if they have a specific, specific route, they have to follow that route.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to tell, Mr. One-Sided, this is what Tyler was trying to tell you, yes? I don't have a problem, like I said, but I just want to make sure that they don't come back at us for shame. Because a lot of people now are very conscious of how the county works and all of that.
I'm just making a formal request based on the constituents' concerns. Does it get approved, does it get approved? That's all I have to tell you.
No opposition to that practice.
You're motioning? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Opposition by Commissioner Juan, yes, ma'am?
Can we, I don't know whether we need to bring it back or redo it, but we agreed to read that. We vote on it, we agree on it, but we can check the previous, we closed under orders, Mr. Urenda. And we put no trucks, and you see, if you look it up and see what it said, we put it into a separate ordinance or not?
Yes, ma'am.
It's to be on the same side.
Absolutely, I agree with.
That's how I would.
I'll amend, I, well, you make the decision.
Commissioner Alonso Carmona is going to amend the motion to reflect that, to reflect that they're going to approve the no truck traffic. However, on the stipulation that Mr. Urenda is going to follow up on the proper protocol or procedure for the no truck traffic being placed on Bradshaw Road. 2.19 Discussion and Appropriate Act. Yes, you voted, everybody voted in the Commissioner Juan, Commissioner. Commissioner. So I'm going to ask for a vote based on the amended language. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.19 Discussion and Appropriate Action, approval to pay the difference on 80 gallon compressor in the amount of $2,239.
Motion.
Motion. Do we have?
I motion.
I know, but he's asking for the backup.
It was under.
No.
It was.
Mr. Arndt.
Did you receive it? I'm sorry?
Only the engine. Tuflo.
This is from the original?
Yeah, this is the original.
We just couldn't play the video?
Yes. It can be done?
Flo, we're missing the backup, but he said he gave it to his secretary Flo, but Mr. Arndt has never received it.
She just sent the front sheet, but it's the same, same compressor.
We've seen the original.
So it was $2,233 more?
Yes. They were all going to be like that because you didn't have the separate vote for the fire station wire.
I don't understand, the one that you were going to buy was $4,000, correct?
But it required a higher voltage, so the fire station is not made for a higher voltage. So all the compressors that I did were going to require that, so this is the one.
I would suggest, just a suggestion, that you make it clear with the paperwork.
I submitted the paperwork.
I understand, but never mind, go ahead.
But we can table it.
Because they're too pressured, he was going to get runs up to 480. And there's two.
Two overs.
Mr. Berida, we accept the one, this is in addition to it.
So it's the same thing, it's just higher, right?
Yes.
It's the same thing, but the one we approved was for $4,000.
Like the electrical voltage was much.
$4,000?
The electrical voltage was a 480.
So Commissioner Juan is saying to request the backup to see, because it's a $2,000 difference.
That's the original.
That the original was a 480 voltage for the fire station, but it required a 280, 280. So they had to, on all three compressors, it was going to be basically the same cost. So we just did the one for the, what we had approved.
Just Flo in the office? Just two minutes for now, and call Flo to send you the green card.
Can I have that?
Yes, sir, are you, I'm going to, are you going to have it by today?
I can get it by right.
Okay, I'm going to recall this, I'm going to recall it. I'm going to recall 220 as well, because that's his item. Discussion and Appropriate Action, approval to advertise telephone system and internet system service?
Judge, as you know, the problem is the internet telephone. And the company that we currently have, you know, they take control of everything, so for one hundred guys, I don't, I'm asking the county, County James Ford, to advertise for a better price and a better way of.
And this is for the telephone and for the internet, correct?
And.
Any other questions?
Is it for the whole county?
Other questions? Do I entertain a motion? Motion by Commissioner Urenda, second by Commissioner Du Lacava. Any discussion? All in favor? And I have one abstention, which is Mr. Alonso Carmona. Motion carries. Recalled, item 220, Discussion and Appropriate Action, approval to repair district clerk's record building roof and side wall panel? That's yours, Commissioner Alonso?
Let me find it, just please. We went with alert, and it's going to be a cheaper cost, the byboard. Instead of having the kind of like robbery, the robbery kind of material for the roof, it's going to be aluminum, or you, whatever.
Flashing.
Oh, sir?
Flashing.
Flashing. So I went with Mrs. Chief, Mrs. Gotalis. She liked the idea, went with the county attorney. She said that it was, it was beautiful. And we put it in, they're not to repair the district clerk's record room. And instead of having any windows for the side, they're going to come and take all the siding that's on there off and just put that open on the, flashing. And there are byboards, the byboard numbers on there, and.
Questions?
But the roof, they're going to make it a pitch, right? Because what are you going to use on top, plastic?
No, laminar.
Oh!
Laminar, in Spanish.
Oh, okay. I thought you said plastic, but what's your?
No, flashing.
Flashing.
Flashing, flashing.
My battery's gone out, so I got an excuse.
Not the boy here, the thing in English, but, el laminar.
Ah, now we understand each other. The plastic, you put what?
The laminar.
He said laminar. In English, laminar.
The siding, what are you going to put on the siding?
It's under, on the side, it's going to have a panel.
What kind of panel?
Laminar.
Laminar, on the side, yes.
That's how she wanted it. So on it, completely sealed. No, it's going to be completely covered because when it rains, the water goes in there.
You were not in your head, I'm sorry, I thought you were with the company as well, I'm sorry.
He's just a consultant, advising us on our, on our language, on our vocabulary.
Flashing.
And is this amount of, it's $102,235, correct? That's the quote? And that is out of the CO? Or where is that going to come out of?
Yeah, I think, yeah, yes, it was.
Which CO?
I'm not sure, because I remember it was, this was supposed to be done like five years ago, I don't remember who CO was. But it was already set aside, and it's a lot cheaper than what we were originally projecting because the other, that.
Flashing?
No, not the flashing, but the.
The flashing.
The polyurethane or whatever it is on top was a lot more expensive.
And it created more leaks. So it is a flashing.
Flashing better. Flashing is better.
No, no, but what you call the roof that has like flashing?
That's the urethane, and any puncture in that, and it causes leaks. And that was one of the problems.
So you don't have the specific CO right now?
I don't know, I don't remember.
But you said there was money.
Yes, because we had separated, like I said, we had set it aside because we weren't doing the urethane, whoever. And then it never happened. He says you're saying there was money, where? Well, we had set it aside to do, it wasn't COs, I don't know what time it was. Are you going to share? Or are you just going over and do it?
And not get it out of the mic.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action, approval for Commissioners Juan Carmona, Alonso Carmona, and Valerie Du Lacava to attend the District 12 Continuum Education Conference for County Officials on December the 1st in Laredo, Texas.
Judge, let me may the record.
Yes, sir.
Juan 3 and 6, and Carmona, that precinct 2.
That is correct. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Juan Carmona is the Commissioner for Precinct 3 and 6, and then Alonso Carmona is the Commissioner for Precinct 2.
I'm not laughing at you, I'm laughing at you, she making very seriously, rather reflect. I'm sorry, Judge, you sound so serious, like, oh my.
Any other questions? Or comments? All in favor? This is just for the milks, correct? Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Du Lacava, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action, monthly report from Dimon County Assistant Fire Chief Mr. David Torres for the month of September 2023.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
As you can see, for the month of September, we had a total of nine calls. No burn ban citations were issued for that month. We did have a motor vehicle accident on September the 1st. The two public relations events, for the ones that we did for 9/11, and the one that we did during, should be in the one we did for the courthouse. And also the structural part that we had on ABM Drive and Rodrigo Pass Road, that's the one that we assisted the, we were summoned by the sheriff office to go ahead and assist them on that fire.
Any questions? Do I entertain a motion? Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Commissioner Valerie Du Lacava, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Any abstention? Motion carries. 2.24 Discussion and Appropriate Action, approval to purchase and install four mobile Motorola radios for fire trucks and other vehicles, one portable handheld Motorola radio, including parts, software, and installation at an amount of $40,207.36.
That judge is, from my understanding, will be using the, I believe it's called, part of the American Relief Fund. That's what I was told that we would probably be using.
Just the one you discussed, and here before Commissioner's court, you said we could use the American Relief Fund?
Oh, yeah?
When we discussed it here in Commissioner's court, you stated that we could use it out of the American Relief.
Yeah, but you need, that's the judge's.
That's my budget.
I'm sorry, he asked me, so. I mean, I asked him, and he said, I didn't figure that.
Yeah, it's under the judge's, the judge's budget. I'm just going to, I don't have a problem with it, but I want to look at the finances of it, because I don't know.
Can I get it from my COs?
Yes.
I'll get it from.
Your CO? Question?
Sure. I thought we were doing away with Motorola, so the new system that supposedly we're going to have.
Right now, they're the only one.
And Motorola will now work with our, with a system that we have, that we're going to have.
Motorola is the only one that's compatible with the system. They're working on a new, there's a walkie that they have that works, but not the radio system right now. We're trying to see if there's another radio that's compatible with that. But Motorola right now is the main one, with switching from your digital down to analog. Some of the firefighters, they're on analog, so they got to switch down. Motorola is the only one capable of doing that.
That's one, that's the last time we heard about it, right? That they were trying to get a grant to upgrade and do away with Motorola, whatever happened.
I think Motorola is the only.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, Motorola now is only authorized by.
They were saying it was a monopoly because they controlled everything. That's the reason I was asking, that's the reason we trotted up about two years ago, two years ago. And Middle Rio was supposed to get in touch with us and see which way.
But I think that's coming from the Austin Greater, I mean, it's called Gators, or whatever it's called, the Greater Austin Traffic Area. That's mostly since that's what we're working on as a trunking system. The radio system that we have, that's what they're authorizing Motorola to use. To be able to use for their, for their frequency.
The only concern is that we buy something like this, and then it's going to be absolutely what we want.
Right now with the software they got, the older systems, yeah, older radios, walkies are not working, the newer systems are. But the software is updated to work with this system right now. A lot of these radios, they offer that encryption where, you know, they, like right now, nobody can program more radios unless they have that software. And without that encryption, anything.
I understand, but that's the only concern I have.
Yes, sir.
What's going to happen, if they move switch one of these years, all the equipment that we have, that we can use. That's the only question I have.
I think if anything, it's, it's just in the 10 or 20, 30 years ago.
But if it.
It's compatible with.
Yeah, it's, it's also, it's old, as you would say, contender for the.
Yeah, and I, and I, we went to the seminar, Judge, I think you remember that there was a Robben or something, they got federal money to put the towers everywhere, and that's the reason I was asking, because they told us there that they were going to start working on everything like that.
I believe they're all working on upgrading some of these towers. Because that time we were out down for like 10 minutes or 20 minutes in that time, and they were upgrading some of.
Because they even said that they were going to put one where the dead zone is. If you have a dead zone, you've got a arena or somewhere around there, they were going to install a tower, that's right?
The dead zone Motorola, the dead, when you're coming to Robben, it's any radio out here, but.
Okay, one question, see, well, we're going to.
Okay, what, what, just one question, see, well, we're gonna do the, if they ever become upset.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner de Lucava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action. Status on additional telephone and computers for county attorney's office approved October first, 2023.
Judge, I already briefly talked to Juan Carmona. My concern is that I'm a new employee, I have no workstation, I have no employment employee, but it makes me stressed that issue. And we have to wait until they're ordered. But I've had the employee for temporary for three months, a prior budget. Managed with, uh, one laptop and one workstation, and then moves in the office. We also have an unpaid intern who really have to share the laptop with her, providing her the best experience possible. She's a criminal justice major. She came, so nobody will, you know, allow the intern that she provides up and unpaid, or unpaid, or, it's all, he was unpaid, so. She's been working out, she's in our county courts as well. It's very spotty, and we'd like to give them the opportunity when we can. So, uh, as soon as we can. I don't know when Operation Lone Star Grant is gonna come in, you know, that comes in, it may solve our problems, and it may cause us to learn to upgrade our, our technology and county attorney's office.
I did talk to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, I did talk to Marty, and they did order the phones, and we're gonna get everything going as soon as, uh, when we get the phones and all that.
Yeah. Yeah, so his phone is here. It got here Friday. I just need to set it up, but that's also the same day Carlos's new computer came in. So I set up Carlos's new computer all day Friday. Um, so after this court, he can't have the new phone, but as far as computers, I was trying to work them by department. That way it won't be all so much. But I didn't know you had a new girl, so I probably would have done it sooner, but, but that's just how it is.
I know, I know you, it's just something, something that we weren't aware of. But go ahead and take care of your phone and then.
Okay.
There is no action on this item? Discussion and appropriate action to contract with IT for computer support for three months?
Yes. We had contacted, uh, another company that was not gonna be able to service us for the next couple of months, and so we contacted another company, and that was Relevant Tech. And they are willing to take us on immediately. However, they weren't able, they did look at the information that I sent them about the contract that we're currently have. They did say that they were, that their contract was a lot less than what, that the new contract would be less than what HellaFox had. And so they were in the process of sending the information. They haven't done it yet, but I do have the information on them. Uh, if you want a table for a minute, I can go and get it, see if it's already come in to the email as far as.
So currently, we still have HellaFox?
Yes.
And we're gonna continue to have HellaFox?
Well, no, that's what I was trying to get, Relevant, to come in and replace them. And they're a lot, uh, they have a lot more staff, and it appears to be that they're.
And this is for what, Mr. Pereira?
IT technology company to replace HellaFox. This is, this would replace HellaFox.
Okay, but right now we have, currently we have HellaFox, but you're also putting up a bid?
Well, no, no, right now we're trying to just do a contract with them to, if it's under fifty thousand dollars, we can.
I understand that part, but you're also asking for bids after the lapse of three months?
Right.
For another IT?
Well, yes, we would have to bid out because the contract would be a lot bigger or higher amount if we go for a yearly, for a year.
There's a different companies that wanna bid, and, uh, I know one that's been helping us with getting a box and all around, so I'm pretty sure they will want.
And the, and the company, the company that we had talked to basically said they can't take, help us out or take over for at least three months. They wouldn't be able to take over until January, which would defeat the purpose.
So we're tabling it, or what do you?
If you could table it, I'll go get the proposal.
You want me to table it, or you want me to recall it?
Oh, recall it, yes. And I'll go get the paperwork for that.
And I recall item two point two six. Two point two seven. Discussion and appropriate action to adopt the Texas Indigent Defense Resolution 2024. For this particular item, we need this resolution signed again just for clarification or educational purposes. Here in Dimmitt County, the Indigent Defense Grant Program is a program in which we participate. That's how we're all, we're able to offset some of the cost for the court-appointed attorneys that we have to pay when it comes to criminal court in my court for misdemeanors, and also for the criminal court in the district courts with Judge Flores and Judge Abascal. And essentially, we need to submit this resolution in order for us to qualify for any of the grant funding that they may, um, provide to the county. So I entertain a motion to authorize myself to sign it and adopt this day of twenty-third of October. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action approval for TC DRS plan for 2024.
That's the plan before you. If you have any questions?
Are there any questions?
Is there any change from last year?
No, and we put in the same amount as we had in previous years.
And essentially, with the vote on the table, this would authorize myself to sign the Dimmitt County, um, Plan Agreement for Year 2024. So then Mr. Pereira can submit it to Tech, or to the retirement system, excuse me. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one. Discussion and appropriate action jail status report.
Good morning. I'm sorry I was late. We were giving a presentation at the.
Do we have the report, Sheriff?
For the jail?
Do we have the report?
No, Cindy's out.
Okay, we can just table it then.
Also, I had a question. I have a question. I don't be on here. It wasn't put on.
It wasn't. Mr. Pereira was looking into it. Mr. Ortiz, I think, brought it up during his public comment in regards to that discussion for the pay, I believe, right? Is that the dispute item you're talking about?
Yes, I got one that didn't get a raise, and the other one got a pay cut. That's why it ended up.
Correct. And Mr. Pereira, um, advised that we needed to sit down and talk to you again because he's adamant that they did not get a pay cut. Um, so we can have that discussion because it's not an agenda item, but we'll have that discussion, and then we can go ahead and, depending upon that, we can, I guess, um, bring it back for, for Commissioner's Court hearing because it would have to be a budget amendment, is what Mr. Pereira told me.
Judge, can we have that discussed in the executive session?
If you want.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not on the agenda, but we can have it.
Also, for the, uh, POs, if I get a vote for three POs, does it have to be all by board, or is it just three quotes from many dealerships?
My distinct understanding, and the Commissioner's Court can clarify if they will, if they want, my distinct understanding is obviously you always want to go with the byboard. However, from my, uh, education from Tech was that if you don't have it on the byboard, if you get three quotes for the same exact item, three different, obviously, businesses, but they're the same specs, the same equipment, or the same vehicle, and you submit that to the court, then it comes to the Commissioner's Court for approval.
Okay, because I got the two vehicles, where money's changed from Stone Garden to get two vehicles. I was trying to get a van, but Border Patrol changed their policies where, um, they're doing intakes now in the field. That means we can no longer transport, so that van got thrown out. We're not able to get the van, so I'm, I'm gonna be getting a vehicle. I got the quotes, but, uh, I got three different ones. Same vehicle, what, Dodge Charger, the Durango, they're all three dealerships, and they're government vehicles. They're all the same, but I, I didn't get the three quotes that way, so I can submit those for appeal and then bring them back to you for approval.
Well, I know that you discussed this with me, and I know that you had advised me, and I told you exactly what I just told you right now. Um, my understanding from what the sheriff told me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, was that Mr. Pereira said that he cannot do that. As far as I've been concerned, and as far as I've been educated, he can get three quotes? I, I know you did that, but I'm, I'm, I just, for the record, because this is what I told you on the phone. I have no need to lie. I told you what, exactly what I'm telling you right now. He advised me that Mr. Pereira, or someone from Mr. Pereira's office, had indicated to him that he was not allowed to do that.
I got a question.
Yes.
Uh, Judge, man. Okay, uh, Border Patrol threw it out of the, out of the, uh, the grants, right, whatever it is.
Yes.
But yet, we're transporting their, their humans, mongers, and all that to wherever they need to go. Is that true?
Well, usually it's from, if we stop them.
No, no, no. My question is, you mentioned something about the, and the last means that you are gonna transport them from here to the valley.
No, not, not the valley. You can.
Where's Segovia?
It's Segovia, it's Segovia Valverde or the Bristol unit, but we have already discussed implementing a program that have been in place that he now has a proper paperwork, and it's very, very particular. Like, if you're off one number, they'll throw it back, and so those, uh, cases will be filled, the sheriff's office will fill that information off, and they get transferred over there, and then once they get transferred, it, it relieves our courts, or sheriff's office.
My misunderstanding is, who's gonna transport?
We will have to transport to Valverde County, yes, because there are arrests.
Here's my question. If Border Patrol is throwing out the van, and you need a van, what, my question is, why doesn't Border Patrol supply you with a van then? Because it's coming out of, uh, uh, a grant, the van, but they took it out, but yet it's coming out of, now it's gonna be coming out of the tax plates to hundreds of persons.
Well, because it becomes our case because the sheriff takes, it's a state charge now.
What are we getting returned?
We're getting the funding from Stone Garden.
But this is what I mean.
So, so essentially, Border Patrol can stop them. Border Patrol will call the sheriff's office and say, do you want to pick up this state charge? If the sheriff's office says we'll pick up the state charge, then now that, that, now that defendant becomes Dimmitt County, and then he'll have to make the proper, uh, protocol to send them over to Segovia. Exactly, and so it's up to, essentially, it's up to the sheriff's office whether his investigators want to take the case, and they send it over to the district attorney's office for prosecution. And, and in order for him, the sheriff's office, and the jail to get grant money, he needs those numbers. The same thing for us with OLS. In order for us to qualify for OLS, we essentially have to get those arrests.
And some of this money, the vehicles that we're using, it wasn't, uh, I guess they weren't using that money, and as we get towards the end of that grant, we're gonna have to send a lot of it back. So Border Patrol allowed to change over, and they just let us buy two vehicles that we do need, we do need two vehicles.
Is there something to the contrary, Commissioners, in regards to the three quotes and the byboard that?
If it's byboard, you don't need three quotes.
What happened to Callba?
If it's not byboard, you need three quotes.
Callba, they don't have the towels, Chevy towels, that's what we would get. So, uh, right now, the only thing available is either a Charger, the Durango.
No, no, I'm gonna pop for the van if you try to get.
Well, the van, that one, we're no longer getting because for the Border Patrol, but they let us use, get a vehicle. I am gonna get a transport van for the jail. We did budget for that one, but we got a company out of Dallas that it's already built. I mean, they got it ready to go.
Can you check with Sidney Martin?
Mm-hmm.
They have towels.
Towels?
They, they provide service to the law, and it's a byboard.
I'll, I'll check with them. The last time I talked to another dealer, he said they weren't, I think maybe to a couple of months, so they start right now production. They have nothing.
Three, three month, uh, last month. I don't, I'm not gonna guarantee they were there. Three grand units came up.
I'll, I'll.
They provided a service to all EMS and fire.
Okay.
I don't know, but you care about what color they are, but what's that type?
My color doesn't matter. We'll get the vehicle.
But check, check with Sidney Martin.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Judge, I have a question.
Yes.
Who's our quarter force, sir?
We don't have a quarter force. You're ahead. I'm doing interviews. If you know, if you know of anybody that wants to interview.
No, I need my cameras checked. I've been having.
No, we're, uh, I got, uh, Sesa. They're going around, they're, they're buying batteries, getting batteries, they're going around. If you got any, they might not know where you're at. Let us know so we can get them because.
I have this, and I need some, my cameras in Katerina checked, because they're big, you would not be.
The park, or?
The tires, and there's, that location has a camera.
Yes, I'll double check on that one. I'll, I'll call them right now.
I did some interviews last week, and I have a couple more this week. I'm hoping that before the end of the month, we'd have a quarter force. Thank you, Sheriff. I'll entertain a motion to table the jail status report.
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Four point one. Discussion and appropriate action status report from Utility. I believe they submitted a report. I think everybody should have it. I'm not sure. Do you have it, Commissioner de Lucava? Here you go. Commissioner Juan, can you have that here, please? That's the report for Utility. Any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
On, on the CSA, I get different, uh, reports. It's the what's, what's the progress of the?
The CSA building, Commissioner, the new floor's been replaced. Um, as far as, as far as what I've recounted going out there, the, the last thing that needs to be done, there's a puncture that they're gonna move, and I think somebody mentioned that you had.
They're also gonna hold move, just so we can get ahead?
Okay, and then other than that, is the asphalt. Uh, Mr. Casada had mentioned that the asphalt needs to be, uh, in, in place before they close the project. Uh, there was a question from, uh.
Is that in regards to the parking lot?
There was a question, uh, in regards to the, uh, internet, uh, wiring for the building. It was a concern because if we're gonna have to trench and put the wiring into the building, we, we definitely want to do it before, if any type of blind from asphalt is placed. But, Mr. Casada, they verified that there's a stub up already, an underground conduit to the exterior part of the parking area where, um, if there's wiring that needs to be run from the pole, they, they run a wire through there and not, not have to rescue it again.
The, the reason I was asking, because, uh, they told me that they, the court was gonna hire somebody to do the pavement, that maybe not so much of the, of the stuff.
No, I just pulled that here from, and I think that that probably came from, Mr., I don't know, but he made us a question that, his recommendation was that the, the county hired a contractor, and I, when he said that, I told him.
I thought you were doing the paving.
I thought so too.
Yeah, uh, that's why I didn't, I didn't know. I think he, he, he.
He mentioned it when we had that meeting last time.
Yeah.
I thought we don't get a contractor.
So when.
Because, uh, there are too many years around the area, and one of, one of my employees, hey, you're gonna do it?
So when we discussed it the last time, it was my distinct understanding that the county was going to do the pavement, if I recall correctly, you were gonna do the pavement? So we can start?
We can start, and now that everything's cool. I'm just gonna need some limestone, uh, what, Pereira?
Not here. Not here.
Do we still have money there, right, for the limestone and the asphalt?
I'll, I'll check. It's in my CO for the CSA. I believe there's some money there. Any other questions in regard to the status report? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hyman. 5.1, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for Carla Ortiz to attend the EMC Response Recovery Course, October 23rd through the 27th in Santa Marcos, Texas.
Judge, is she over there already?
Yes, ma'am. She's there.
Can we let them know that they need to put the travel course prior to their, because we've been teaching here because it's not here, she's not here.
I can tell her that, yes. And this, this, this was just in specific, this is specifically for meals, not for travel.
But then she's already out there?
Now I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Man, there.
When is she going to, to Borja or I don't know, wherever they have.
She, she needs to go. I was contacted last week by Mr. Perez, Fernando Perez, and he advised me that her or I needed to attend that course because we're the emergency management on file, and it needed to be, it's a mandatory course. However, he was going to let us know when the next date was, because the last one was in April, and at that time, I was, well, I mean, I still am the emergency manager, she's the assistant, but we, I was wanting to see if I can get somebody to go in my place. So we're waiting. I'm hoping he'll get that to us. I talked to him last week.
And also.
Did you want to attend?
Sure.
I'll get, I'll get with him so he can get me all that documentation and get that to you.
Also, I don't know if you're aware, there's funding for the local emergency planning committee. There's funding for that, and I just spoke to her about it last week.
Perfect.
When we had the meeting for the hazardous materials on a terminal, on a terminal, oil terminal and gas, and I told her that it has to, because people from the, because people from the community, she wants to put local, illegal vehicles, but there's funding for all of that, so I've been trying for this for several years.
Well, we can get on it this year.
And this is why they go. Emergency planning. So if we can consider using the funding to somebody else, or if we use it.
I'm writing that down. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I distracted you from.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? I have one abstention by absence, Mr. Juan Carmona. I'll entertain a motion for the status report for Ms. Ortiz. Motion by Commissioner Odena, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona. Alonso Carmona, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? One abstention by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Motion carries. 6.1, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly report from County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz for the month of August 2023.
So this report will close out our fiscal year. The only account we are in the red, that's only because when our system went down, a check did get cashed, so we weren't able to correct it while the, while our server was down. But as of now, we're current with that account. And then any information regarding our investments will be on this, on the next item, 6.2.
Any questions? All in favor, or excuse me, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We have one abstention, Commissioner Juan Carmona. He stepped out. Motion carries. 6.2, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Q4 Investment Report.
So this is required by the government code. Every quarter, the investment officers are supposed to present the quarterly report. So this is all the money between July and this past month, September. And as, the first page is pretty much just a summary. So beginning, beginning of July, we had a total of $91 million in our investments. Between that quarter, I added $19.4 million, and I withdrew about $12 million to pay the CO expenditures and our debt payment. And then we earned about $1 million in interest, and we are currently sitting, as of the 30th, at $98 million.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Abstain.
I have one abstention, Commissioner Juan Carmona. Motion carries. I'll recall item number 6.4, or 6.3 with Mr. Pereira. I don't know where he went. Is he outside, Yes. I'm going to call item 2.119, Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Pay the Difference on the 80-gallon compressor in the amount of $2,239. They're both, it says 80-gallon? So what, what, what mirror, what's causing it to cost $2,000 more?
The whole system for the electrical.
So is it like a new compressor, a different, a totally different?
No, no, it's the same one, but it's a totally different setup, because the one that they sent us was 200 and something.
480.
At 480 volts, and then the one that we needed was a 208, because the fire station is not equipped for that high wire. It only runs out of 220. But it's the same, and I checked on the other ones, and they went the same, same procedure. And the monolith was going to cost more.
So it'd be a bit set up, you know, in a.
Yes, yes. It's just the wiring from the, from the building.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeWolga. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Abstain.
Commissioner Juan Carmona is going to abstain. You can abstain. I mean, you have three votes, I suppose.
Abstain.
And abstention by Commissioner Alonso Carmona? He just wants to abstain. I don't.
Let's pay it for it. Never know.
Okay. Mr. Pereira, he's not here. Odena, can you get a hold of Mr. Pereira, please? At this time, the time is 12:04, and I'm going to go into executive session in regards to a request by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Actually, we're doing September. We already did August last month, and so.
Let the record reflect that the agenda items should reflect September 2023.
For, for mine as well.
So under the revenues, under current taxes, we actually collected $254,000 above and beyond what we had budgeted. And as far as sales tax, it was also $1.3 million above and beyond what we had projected. And then on top of the, the interest earned, we also collected, we had budgeted $160,000 based on previous year. Interest rates have gone way high this year, and so we were actually, at the end of September, $1,516,000, which is $1,300 above and beyond, above what we had projected. So that gives us a total of $21,000, $21,189,000 expenditures of $15,327,748. So we will have $5 million revenues over expenditures for the end of September 30.
How much?
Five million.
Five hundred.
Five million.
Five million.
For September.
For September 30, for the end of the fiscal year, yes.
For the end of the fiscal year, we'll have $5 million in revenue.
Of revenues over expenditures.
Revenues over expenditures.
Pereira, one, one thing, I'm sorry, Judge.
Questions?
Pereira, Mr. Pereira, whenever, so if we get the final report on this, tell us how all the, the businesses that we have, like sanitation, activity and all of that, how we, how we fare out with the amount that, you know, how much do we go under, like especially the jail? I don't know about the jail.
Well, the detention board bills.
Five million, but actually I want to see how we all fare out.
Well, like the detention board bills, we had budgeted $100,000. We only collected $666,000, $666,000, so we were short by $208,000.
On here, Commissioner, where you see right here? You go to revenues?
Yeah, the, what I'm saying, Judge, is this is not the final report, because you're still paying bills from, from September, correct?
Right, but we, but we also accrue a lot of the bills already. So if you look at, that's why you're going to have, when you get SecHouse payable, you have a lot of lists because part of them are for this coming year, for '23, '24, and a lot of them are from '22, '23. So whatever comes in for September, we assign it to that.
So you can't take it out of what?
Of last year's.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. When you have the final tally.
But approximately, that's, we're pretty close to giving.
Approximately, yes.
And that's what the audit.
Because if I'm thinking, we got $5 million, and you come and say, "Oh, oh, we have to pay this, we have this," and it's only $4,900.
No, we're going to get pretty close to that amount. It's actually a lot, some more. It's more than $5 million, but I'm putting in figures.
Oh, okay.
Make an adjustments for bills that still have to be paid. And in, in here, if you look, there'll be the utility department, the golf course, and the general fund, and the CEOs. Broken down. Revenues and expenditures.
Just those? Just those are moving on, you said?
No, no, the, the.
They're all, they're all. We protect, but are you going to collect those up for that?
Yes, yes, re.
See, that's why I was asking.
Any other questions?
Did we meet the expectation of the jail?
She's asking if we met the expectation of the jail.
No, we were $200,000 short in detention board bills, but that has a lot to do with having illegals and having to house illegals that we don't have, we don't have space for the US Marshals. So that has affected us too.
And I, I'm going to meet with the sheriff again, but I'm, and we called DPS to get that form again, because there's a specific form that you have to submit. And I know that the sheriff discussed with me that he had also contacted the sheriff in Savala County, because Savala County sends their inmates over there that are, have a nexus to the smuggling. So I'm hoping that moving forward, we're going to go ahead and do that with the jail and the sheriff's office to send all those inmates that are related to or have a nexus to the smuggling to the proper facility, whether it's Segovia, the Briscoe or Valverde. But I did discuss with Sheriff Casaleada last week, and he did tell me that they were working on getting that document, because essentially, it's just getting that documentation to send them off so that we can start freeing up space for marshals.
And the taxes in, for last year, the reason that we're over on most of them, or the amount, is because of the supplements that we have from the tax office. And all these are basically new oil wells that are being, that are being created, and so that creates a supplement in the tax office, and the sales tax also, because they're buying a lot of the materials here in the county, and so that's why we're over in some of those amounts. Just between those two, we're about $1.5 million over what we had projected.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.4, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Budget Adjustment Within Public Facilities.
To approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is her second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion?
Judge, are these budget adjustments for this, for the year or for the previous year?
It's for this year, Commissioner DeWolga.
For this year?
It wasn't in there? It's not in there? There you go. He's moving it from the part-time, his part-time to the, the position that Commissioner, Commissioner Juan has. Oh, excuse me, is that the utilities? I'm sorry. I meant to give you Commissioner Juan's. I don't have Commissioner Juan's.
Mine? Or we move?
To your public facility, right? For them.
I thought we approved that one on the, that's, that budget. This is, okay, let me ask you this. This for the, the money that we're going to, that we were short on the workers?
Yes. This is from, moving it from your part-time to your maintenance person. It's right there, Commissioner DeWolga. It wasn't in the packet. When the, when the, when the budget, so my distinct understanding is that when the budget was made, me personally, and I don't want to speak for Pereira, from what Mr. Pereira advised me, was that he was not aware that Commissioner Juan was paying this particular employee this amount. So when we did the budget, we did it based on the amount that we had, and that's what got approved. So then Commissioner Juan comes back and says, "No, I'm not paying him that. I'm paying him this much." So it wasn't budgeted for that much. It was budgeted for what we had before us. So that employee's salary is going to be short. So what we did, what we need, what we're needing to do is to do a budget adjustment, so move monies from his part-time to the maintenance, that specific man, and so he can be able to, Commissioner Juan can continue to pay him at that salary rate that he was paying.
And my concern, yeah?
Yes.
My concern was, when I talked to Mr. Perez, is we, we brought it before commissioners go, we are going to pay $18,000 for him. So how can the stake be there and still pay him the 13? We all approved for him to take pay.
And Commissioner Juan advised me that he had submitted the change back, the last fiscal year, a couple of months ago, back in April, whenever, that he decided to pay him the 18, and he had submitted that payroll notice to Mr. Ortiz. Somewhere between Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Pereira, there was some, either lack of communication or Mr. Pereira didn't find out, or I, I can't speak for them, but Mr. Pereira was still under the impression that it was the, the previous salary, not the 18. but Mr. Pereda was still under the impression that it was the previous salary, not the 18 dollars an hour. So when we were reviewing and revising the budget, we kept it at that, including the $2.50 raise. But even at that, there's still not enough, because he's paying him 18 dollars. And we had put it at, bring him up to the 13. So Mr. Pereda didn't know, I didn't know, so we kept it at the 13. So he's obviously lacking, because he's giving him 18, and there's not in the budget. So we called Tac Legal, and Tac Legal said, the budget's been approved, and there's money within salaries to move, we just need to do a budget adjustment, not a budget amendment, because there's monies within salaries to move, and that's why we're doing an adjustment, not an amendment.
Because like the judge and I were talking the other day, I said, we have never amended the budget, so this is the issue's way, so it's more than moving to, to amend the whole budget.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.5 discussion and appropriate action budget amendment, budget adjustment, excuse me, within utility department. Same statement, commissioners, in this particular case.
And these 3,000, one, twenty-two, the dollar fifty, that's?
That is the dollar fifty, that reflects the a dollar fifty.
And it wasn't put there because they weren't getting the dollar fifty raise, or what was the reason?
No, it wasn't put there, and what we approved in Commissioner's Court was that everyone was entitled to the dollar fifty, correct?
Well, they're not entitled, it was just the budgeted for, up to a dollar.
The budgeted for.
Well, the dollar fifty is for everybody, even if they haven't been here a year?
That's not what we said.
That's why I'm asking.
I thought it was 90 days.
We had mentioned 90 days, when we, the last time we were in Commissioner's Court, it said, once they have been here for 90 days.
So then that means I have to do a budget adjustment for my employees to change five of them to the dollar fifty raise.
But your employees got up to a dollar fifty raise, it was on there. From the previous.
I'll go back and check.
They are, because, Mr.
I need to check, because, but I guess two of them, they told, they told me, I think two of Mr. Ortiz didn't, because they told me if they weren't here more than a year, they were not going to get the dollar fifty. And I asked, I said, but it says on the minutes, the dollar fifty after the 90 days, so I just want to make sure on it.
But, but just to clarify, Commissioner Duca, I'm almost certain that even though they haven't been here the 90 days, or whatever it is, that the budget does show, because we went back with it with Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Pereda the other day, when all these things started coming up, and there was none of your guys that didn't get up to a dollar fifty. I mean, obviously, it's your discretion, if you don't want to give it to them, that's up to you.
It is true.
But.
I'm pretty sure yours did get the dollar fifty, but they only went, correct me if I'm wrong, they only went from 11 to 13, they don't go from 11 to 13 and then another dollar fifty, they don't do that, it's just 11.
That's why I'm asking.
Because essentially, they go up two dollars.
Uh huh, so that's why I'm asking on this one.
This one, and the employees of this, they've been, one of them's been with the county over 10 years, and the old one, six years.
Now, that, yours is different, yours is, they went from 11 to 13.
They just didn't budget.
This one didn't get it, at all.
Yeah, they just weren't budgeting.
So yours did get it.
I don't think it, because it says the inspector, so the inspector hasn't been here more than 10 years.
I don't know, he got, he didn't get the dollar fifty was the problem. Yours did get, it's not the same issue.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying, so after the 90 days, they get the dollar fifty raise.
Yes.
No, that's not how it is.
They were supposed to get it on this budget, what do we have?
If the employee had been here 90 days, they are entitled to the raise for this fiscal year.
Right.
Right.
Yes, and that was the problem, we didn't, A, didn't get it.
I need to make sure, some of them are saying yes, and some of them are saying no, so I need to be in the.
No, Mr. Pereda, if they were here, regardless of the 90 days or not the 90 days, and they're at 11 dollars, we moved the budget to make everybody up to 13, so that some people got $2 raises than a dollar fifty raise. The 90 days applies for somebody that's been here, that their starting pay was not 11 because of the way the salary was before. So let's say for instance, let's say for instance.
Judge, I have one, let's say for instance, my sanitation, there's one, and he's, he's probably going to be here in the 90 days, it would have been October 17. Does he, he doesn't qualify for the dollar fifty just to be bumped up to the 13 dollars.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes, that's, that's what I like to know, because that's why I said, I have several that didn't get the dollar fifty.
So he essentially got $2, if you will, because he bumped up to 13. But let's say for instance, we'll just use another one of their sanitations, I don't know, Joe Blow. And Joe Blow, because of the way the salaries were before, Joe Blow starts at 14 dollars an hour, and you hired him, but he hasn't been here 90 days, he has to be here 90 days, then he gets a dollar fifty. Because on the budget, we budgeted for them up to a dollar fifty, ¿me entiendes?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because I know, let's say for instance, he bumped up to 13 dollars, would be the starting pay.
Yes, ma'am.
But, and then October, that would be the 90 days, so he doesn't get the dollar fifty. It was just that dollar raise he got.
Two dollars, two dollars.
He was at 12, so we, the base scale said 13 dollars, that's what I'm saying.
Well, if he was at 12.
Throw a hundred and fifty in our, in our system, 13.50.
Well, he was 12, that's what I'm saying.
So in October, I think 17, that's when the 90 days could have taken effect.
So he started in July?
More or less.
So that'd be at 12.
Because she had, she had an open position at 12, last year.
I get you, okay, because I know.
See, in that situation, in that situation, if she had an open position that was supposed to start at 12 dollars, not at 11, like everybody else, she had somebody that's supposed to start at 12, when the budget, it should have been a dollar fifty.
13.50, yeah.
I need to go back and check.
Yeah, but I'm sure they made it to 13.50, because I think, yeah, but I'm not sure. Is there something to take up, where it was found, which is 13.50?
The, yeah, the only one that I know that didn't get their dollar fifty is the people on this board. The department's here, and then the sheriff's office.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a question, Judge. What happens, when are we gonna, when are you, the judge and you two are going to wait for that description, or what, the job description, or whatever, because.
We need to meet with Mr. Ortiz on that.
Let me ask you, when we used to have the old one, it was operator would be at 11, and after the 90 days, he would go up to 13, it was written on there. Now, we say we don't have anything like that, so we know we're going to have something that we can follow, and say, okay, after the 90 days, I'm going to give you a dollar more, because you are now the operator.
Well, the descriptions that I've made, that I have, they're ready to go, I've been giving to some elected officials, but I don't know if they've read them yet, but anyways, it doesn't mention their pay, it's just mentioning their jobs. So the pay would be up to, we can add that, but it would be, it would be up to the department head.
Because we have it, I'm, I'm sure, Eric's got an old one there, but then he can show you how we operate.
Mr. Carmona, it doesn't matter, it's still there, we're not altering it.
Well, that's why I'm saying, we're going to start following, like the judge said, from now on, moving forward, we need to keep calm and address the issue, but also, we need to follow what we say. That's, that's the only thing I'm saying, make us a job description, because they said, let's say for example, a blade operator, he can start at 13, and after 90 days, if you want to pay him the 50, then you can pay him the 50. Then what is it bringing, then we cannot do that. Because we all agree that we can, we can get a blade operator for no $10, but we need to have it writing.
That would be something that would be brought to your research court and you all approve.
The what?
That would be something that would be brought to your research court and you all approve.
We're working on it, just get it right the first time, so we don't have to table it and come back again, and table it again, because we don't like it. Let's write down, this is the starting pay for an operator, and this is the max that you can earn after 90 days.
As of right now, the starting for an operator, as long as they have their CDL, it's 16. 13, 13 plus 3, if they have their CDL.
Right, well, yeah, no, that, that we know, but what I'm saying, like the, the operators, right? Let's say you got a CDL, can you follow under the CDL, I would prefer the CDL than a dollar raise, right?
If they have their licenses.
Right, of course.
Any other questions on the utility department? I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Duca, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries.
I'm saying that, I would think here where that discussed.
Abstention one by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. 6.6 discussion and appropriate action budget adjustment within the golf course. Again.
Pereda, so based on their, their writing, they should be the department head, because they have 35.
What's her status?
What, what, Pereda, I thought you replied starting at 13.
So, this is one of those positions that was established, that for manager, manager of the golf course, I know I'm not in there.
I don't see her now. Okay, all right, right now, you brought up a 2.00. So Marky was 560, and yet, voted to bring him down, so out of the work.
Who would you bring him down?
We all, yeah, when I presented, he said, no, he goes to 50.
You remember that?
Yeah, his pay was 60, because that's what we.
We didn't bring him down, you probably did, but you, not us, not us. We didn't bring him down, he might have been there, but not, not us.
I don't think, what happened? She's the head department, and she's going to earn 35, and yet, Marky, when I hired him, he was going to go up to 60, and yet, we have to bring him down. Right? The amount that was to be paid was 60,000 a year, because he was the head man.
Oh, that's what was budgeted, but that's not what you agreed today.
Well, I want to adjust it to where he can get it then. See, he's, he can make the move, so can I.
You will need to bring him back to Commissioner's Court.
No, 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 no. The agreement was 60,000 when we first made the agreement, and you said, no, but you got, I started, I didn't start it at 60, I started with 40.
The difference on that, for that position at 60,000, Marky right now, he doesn't qualify, because the Department of Labor has, that was going to be an exempt status, so there's different, for IT, there's different regulations to be exempt, and Marky can't do those things that, for that exempt status.
Well, what do you mean, what exemptions?
So, I, as an Department of Labor.
Well, let's, currently, then I'll bring it back, so you can explain to me, and then I know, I know what I'm up to. Because now, we're just going to go around and run around, but the approval that the Commissioner's Court made was 60,000, there was the approval, when we were going to hire somebody.
If you could have taken that hourly, but not salary, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, it's going to, I mean, if we got him hourly.
Right, I think you did.
So what is it allowing to do to make him earn his money?
Well, the budget already got locked in for this year at.
No, 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 we're, we're making adjustments right now.
Well, yes, yes.
Okay.
But for him to be in exempt status, which is, he doesn't get, like comp plan, he won't, no matter how many hours he works a week, that's, that's the money he gets. But he has to be able to do certain things, and I don't know if Marky has that knowledge.
Yes. Now, I'm going to be like the judge. We, the past administration, we questioned that, and they told us that he could do, that the other guy was here, he would come time, and he was getting a lot more than, than he was. He was getting 80 or 90,000 dollars, and yet, he was able to claim, because then they would say, no, no, well, he's full-time, hourly, but when it was convenient, he's, he's.
Who would say that, the old judge?
No, when we, Danny said, no, we asked, I asked you, and you said, his, his part-time, his salary, and then his hourly, so which one was it?
He was salary.
Yes. Okay, so why did he get come time?
He didn't get come time.
Chris, oh, sorry.
Previous IT.
Yes. And so, the other lady that worked under the judge, that was on salary? The other supervisory inspector was on salary, so Mr.
Those weren't salaries, okay, those weren't salaries, on salary positions.
What do you mean that they weren't positions?
They weren't salary positions.
Right, but they would still claim come time, and we always questioned, and you always say, they can't.
If they're not, non-salary, they can claim comp, but if they're salary, they cannot claim comp.
That was a discussion with the, also with the, well, I'm not, what do you mean?
Yeah, no, like I said, all I want to correct is his salary, okay?
Do I have a?
Motion.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner.
I converted.
Yes, I did, Commissioner Urenda or Duca?
Duca.
Duca, all in favor? Motion carries, discussion and appropriate action budget adjustment within the county judge department. On this item, I had a lateral transfer, lateral move from the Mr. Garcia's office, a clerk's office, to the county judge, judge's office, who fulfilled that PO clerk position. As you can tell, that Ms., or I'm not supposed to mention names, but the employee transfer was at a higher rate than what I budgeted for in terms of the position. The, as per Tac, the longevity pay comes from the department in which the person was, so it's like a dual budget adjustment from within my salaries, and then the longevity comes from the clerk's office, from Mr. Garcia's.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. 6.8, the claim document. On the claim document, we have the general fund, which is 1,552,633.18. Dimmitt County Clerk, 2,729.8 cents. Then we have the Dimmitt County District Clerk, 4,191.96. Dimmitt County Airport, 3,548.15. Dimmitt County Golf Course, 12,129.31. Courthouse Security, 3,127.30. Record Management County Clerk, 1,146.11. Utility, 48,569.69 cents. Equitable sharing and forfeiture procedures, 389 dollars. Rodeo Arena, 650 dollars. Stone Garden, 37,910.5 cents. C.T. Tech Stock, 648,027 dollars. Dimmitt County Payroll, 456,039.76, for a grand total of 2,771.90.59.
And if you notice, if you'll notice on some of these lists, we had to do more lists because we had to account for the previous year and/or this year's also separately.
I got a question. Judge, ma'am?
Question.
Why am I being charged the repairs for the freezer of the commodity building?
What page is that on?
On page, page.
It's at the top, Mr. Carmona, Commissioner.
On page, page, was it page one? But we're way in there.
You're such a generous and good person.
Oh, you're beautiful. Um, right here, it's, it's another, they didn't even pay for the ability that priority. It's, I don't know, 442, and then it's courthouse heat, I mean, comfort, freezer and cooler, I don't have a freezer and cooler in my office, this is a commodity building. Oh, I read it wrong, oh, sorry, I read, I read it wrong, Judge.
You read it wrong, Commissioner.
It's okay. I'm in trouble to one mistake. To your own.
Are there any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, the time is 1:22.
I got this number, maybe 18.
What number was it? Oh, yeah.
21?
226, recall, 226. Two twenty-six, recall, two twenty-six, to contract with IT for computer support for three months. Can we see that?
Yes, and this is where, well, that's, you're good, and this is our proposal.
Okay.
And this is their purposes. We've got a basis.
So this in particular, Mr. Pereira, is for them to offer what kind of services to us?
The same, they're gonna have you with, up, up, but it should work.
So.
I'm sorry, Judge.
It's okay, so the, they have a setup fee of twelve thousand five hundred seventeen, and then the first month is eighteen thousand, so it's two separate?
Well, yeah, the twelve thousand is for the setup fee, but it's five thousand dollars on a basis, but that was.
Well, what's the total amount for the first month?
Eighteen. Fourth month?
First month, and then the second month, so second and third month, we're only asking for three months.
Right. So eighteen thousand for the first month?
So essentially, if we decide not to go with this bid, we're essentially throwing out eighteen thousand for three?
And that's what I asked him, because what happened? And he's willing to actually come down here tomorrow to go over and see the whole, uh, setup, and whatever we don't use or don't need, he, they will reduce it to what they need. But this is basically licenses on what they think they're gonna need to do the job for us. So I think we're paying somewhere around half a cent a car payment.
The only concern I have is that we're gonna be paying so much, and.
But I think we're paying. How much are we, how much are we paying for support? I don't want the whole basis, I don't, I don't.
One month for twelve thousand.
See, so it's. So they're charging, so who the fuck is charging twelve thousand for one month? Yeah, so for a three, three-month period.
Does every time is twelve?
Yeah.
It's extra. That's what we wanna get rid of. As, the judge brought, yeah, it's possible, the judge brought in a good point a while ago. If we go with this guy, we gotta pay those eighteen, eighteen thousand.
Well, ten thousand.
Well, and then we're gonna pay Hella Fox one more month? We need to get rid of Hella Fox, get her back for.
Well, we lose a three, no, five thousand bucks given to him, you know, it's gonna take his on in thirty days.
Yeah, now that makes sense, because I don't wanna pay sixty thousand for, for something there.
Correct.
Their most, their most are gonna be doing it. I don't want the bucks.
So give, give Hella Fox thirty day, thirty days' notice, and then these guys come on for the days.
Yes, sir.
Where they from?
No.
No, these are not, these aren't from Bowie, Texas.
Yeah, they're from, but they have people that go down here, so they were willing to go down here tomorrow. And go over.
So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna entertain a motion to table it, because anyway, we still gonna be with Hella Fox for thirty days until you give them.
Until we give them Hella Fox notice?
Give them notice, I would say.
And, and not with that, you prepare, because everything's coming over now.
I do wanna mention that we actually were looking at the other.
I will, I will stick for the record, though, that is, we give them the thirty days' notice, and they intentionally hold our servers or hold our IT, or would give Marque a hard time, that Dimmitt County, if I get authorized for the court, we will move forward legally, because we need to use those, and they've been notorious. When I first came in, remember when the sheriff's office didn't pay? They shut off all the servers for the sheriff's office, and the emergency phone calls and everything, simply because we were being held at their mercy. And, and that is disrupting, it's, it's a criminal offense to disrupt with any legal investigations or any nine-one-one calls, and if the commissioner's court allowed me, I will pursue charges against Hella Fox if they do that, given that we're giving them notice that we're no longer, because they weren't even answering Marque's calls.
They weren't answering. I do wanna mention one thing, that we had, we were actually with another company, it is invested, I'm sorry.
Invested, I'm supposed to have the teleconference with them tomorrow?
They weren't, they, they couldn't take us on until after January, and so, it recommended.
That's the media, we talked to them, and.
And, and, uh, so they recommended this company, and this company will do it as soon as possible, ASAP.
Okay, well, you see, we're gonna offer bid, we can open it very, but the essential answer could be that, that company that, that you're, you're saying, if they're lower and they can do the job, then we're gonna go with the company that does the job.
Yes.
So, right?
Correct.
Because if I, if I tell, if I tell you, go and tell them to put up bid, and then we're gonna hire them, I'm already committed. I'm breaking the law. So what you need to tell them is.
Oh, no, there were that, I thought.
What you need to tell them is, once January comes, we're gonna put up a bid, and we're gonna get the loan with it.
Right, there were that, and, and the reason that we were going out.
That, that's just, I wanna, I wanna make this clear.
Was because we couldn't go out with fifty thousand dollars, so that's why we were going this route, and that would give us immediate service.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to table this item until we get Hella Fox the thirty days.
Can't you do the thirty days under this kind of, give to official commissioner's court? After, after we get, uh, Hella Fox?
And we can do that, if you want, if you, if you, if you guys are okay with that eighteen thousand dollar startup.
No, the, the, give Hella.
Well, no, yes, we're, we're, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda item to reflect that the court is authorizing Carlos Pereira, the auditor, to notify Hella Fox that the contract with Hella Fox is to be terminated within thirty days. I'll entertain that motion.
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, second by Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, uh, opposition? Motion carries.
Remember, it's payroll within that time. Tax office can be down to the state, Mr. Garcia, and he owes.
That's what they did to that, to us last time?
That's what they did to us last time, and then we were, we were screaming to see what we're gonna do, but we need to make sure we do it the right way before.
Well, the good thing is that we can immediately.
Be correct.
Hire these guys.
The time is one thirty, and the court is going to go into executive session as per Commissioner Noguca's request regarding person now. Five, on the executive session, let the record reflect that there was no decisions or votes in the executive session. Uh, entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the regular commissioner's court meetings. Motion by Commissioner Noguca, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. You didn't second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The time is one fifty-five, and I'm going to call the public facilities meeting to order. Go call, let the record reflect, Mr. Garcia, that all parties that were present during the regular commissioner's court meeting are present currently. Approval of minutes of regular meeting October the ninth, twenty twenty-three. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point one, discussion of appropriate action, new business.
Judge, this oil patrol station is nothing but headaches. We, uh.
Still wanted?
We finally figured out what the problem was, the lines breaking every month, every two months, whatever. So we, I ordered, I, I estimate to get a pressure valve, so we can work. The water coming in, it, it comes directly from, uh, from the well, and that's coming in at ninety PCI, or whatever they call it, and it's supposed to be down to fifty or forty. So that's the pressure that's breaking our lines. So now, we're gonna put a, a regulator.
Yeah, it's supposed to be at fifty-two.
And, uh, we're gonna get a, a regulator, so we can cut down the pressure a bit. That's a little extra, and Pereira, when you go to, uh, the meeting with you and the judge to vote the deal, or whenever you're gonna discuss, remember you told us that you were going, that you mentioned that we do our job, that we addressed the problem, that people from the, they'll really think, and we're not doing anything, but, but we are doing.
What does that mean, Mr. Pereira?
I don't know what you're talking about. I mean, they want us, they have indicated they want us to negotiate, but that's as far as, I did not know anything else.
The company, I think, was, was, that's the same company they used to have at Old, you know?
The what?
The oil patrol station, the one from Del Rio.
Okay.
Jafco, J-A-S-S, I don't know.
But that, the, the people from Del Rio are the ones that handle the lease here?
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
But it's the, but it's the federal government that does it?
Right.
Okay.
But they called the federal government, because supposedly they got the contract, I said, you don't, you don't tell me, or you don't tell Dimmitt County what the penalties are, we're gonna address the problems, but they keep saying that we have to notify, or they notify me that something's wrong, I said, no, it's, it's you over here.
But you're talking about, you're not talking about the federal government, you're talking about somebody private company?
Yeah, private, and they run the same company, but supposedly they, they, they're the ones that are recharged. So whenever you go down there, uh, just, just advise them that it's our building, we take care of it, and that's it.
I don't know, maybe, maybe, I, we, in fact, I had talked to the judge, and we need to start negotiating for next year.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But that's as far as we have gotten.
But what, what I'm trying to, I, I don't know if it's coming along, but when you know, Coach, you tell them that you will take care of our problems, if that company's got a contract with them to clean the inside, or, or whatever, let them speak to that, and then we'll start it off.
Oh, okay, they're probably the cleaning crew that they've got a contract, okay.
Right, because they wanna know everything that's going on. You, well, you got access to the judge, you have a judge's court, that's, yeah.
And, and the pressure that the, the commissioner's talking about, that blew the, the fire hydrant here by the tech, the eighty-five in East Avenue, it blew the fire hydrant, it's coming in a hundred, it's for eight, so it's supposed to be a fifty-two. Or it just, it just runs out?
Yeah, so, uh, that's the reason we're speaking a lot of mind, Judge, and I think I will finally gonna correct.
No action on the discussion of new business? Three point one, appropriate, discussion of appropriate action, monthly report?
Basically, my, my report, we fixed the, uh, we started painting those, uh, columns, because they keep saying that they couldn't see them. First thing we do is paint them red, and the first thing they do is run over one of them, so they, uh, the workers put reflection tape on it, so they can see them, and, uh, we got a Stanford, Stanford and Sons, go wild, they, and they're the ones that are, you know, drinking the water and everything, that's their name, Stanford and Sons. He all thought I was picking it up. And, uh, they're, they're, we're gonna take care of it.
The monthly report with revenues expenditures is enclosed in your package.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any other discussion?
Mr. Pereira, when I see the, I'm sorry. Because when I see the, the, uh, bayroom, you only put up there the amount. I would like for the record to show my two blowing something, or three blowing out. Pereira?
Mr. Pereira?
Yeah, no, no, I'm trying to look at.
He doesn't say anything, it just says four thousand.
Because that's what the game up is.
Alright, because sometimes I question the other commissioner's side. Who's under red, or red, so I wanna be under, so they know.
But all we're giving here is just the amount that has to be changed, and that's the first one, it's just a dollar or a.
Thank you, sir. So.
Now entertain a motion, run it, that was a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Claim document, public safety, fifty-one thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and zero cents.
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? On the insurance, Mr. Pereira, that big number, that's only, that's to pay the insurance for the.
That's the insurance for the, the liability, the building, I don't think, a year.
Just so that the record reflects the, the larger number, because typically, you see a smaller number on the claim document, but in this particular case, it's for the insurance. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion for recess and adjournment.
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, everybody.